But I didn't ask because.
It wasn't in the newsletter, though. They did put it in the newsletter.
Yes.
So we're gonna make that announcement tonight. Oh, we, I didn't mention the handicap bathroom. Maybe you could if you wanted to, but.
If I remember, you can chime in.
I mean, you do it every year. So the people who need that know that's there.
Of course, yes.
Where to find it. I don't think I can make that announcement. I think so.
No, I just.
I think the new staff and education. And then whatever department. And, you know, some things get in front of the education.
Sue, can I do you right after the announcements if we move you up?
What, so I'm just here in case somebody has.
Oh, okay.
To say about the twenty percent.
No, it was just about maybe highlight this. I, no, I just thought maybe recapping what the meeting was about on the thirtieth, but that doesn't need to happen.
It was an hour and.
Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Berniston Select Board Meeting for Wednesday, August sixth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call the meeting to order at six oh one P M. Uh, this meeting is being broadcast live on B N C T V and livestreamed on YouTube. To find B N C T V on YouTube, go to YouTube dot com and search for Berniston Northfield Community Television. This meeting will be available for later viewing by following the link at the townofberniston.org. You can also watch channel ten seventy-five on your Comcast dial in Berniston. We'll start with the warrants. I'll entertain a motion for the payroll warrant in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion for the vendor warrant in the amount of seven hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
And just a note on that one, the biggest portion of this is the Pioneer Valley Regional School Assessment of seven hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, the environmental monitoring for the Conservation Commission on the Berniston Road Solar Field of ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And the annual fees for the animal control kennel fees for F Y twenty-six of six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Do we get reimbursed on the Conservation Commission?
We do from the developer.
I see.
They reimburse a fund that's just a pass through.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. I wasn't here. Calendar and announcements. Chill with Willie Wednesdays at Cushman Library at four P M. Join Willie, the bright spot therapy dog, and his owner, Michelle, at Cushman Library. Whether you're stopping by for a smuggle or just want to hang out, Willie will be there to brighten your day each Wednesday throughout August at four P M. The Board of Health will meet on Tuesday, August twelfth, at three thirty P M at the Town Hall. The three-town Select Board and Finance Committees of Berniston, Leiden, and Northfield will meet on August seventh at six P M at the Berniston Senior Center. The six-town Regional Planning Board has been invited to present an update on their current progress and long-range planning efforts. The Council on Aging will hold their monthly meeting on Tuesday, August twelfth, at nine thirty A M at the Senior Center. The Berniston-Leiden Efficiency and Regionalization Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, August twelfth, at five thirty P M at the Berniston Town Hall. The Kiwanis Annual Senior Dinner will be held on Tuesday, August twelfth, at Kiwanis Park in Berniston, with a social hour starting at five P M and dinner at six. Uh, celebrating the Powers Institute, join us for a special cookout on Monday, August eighteenth, at one thirty P M at the Senior Center. We will be grilling and celebrating alumni of the Powers Institute while breaking in new outdoor furniture. Please R S V P by August fourteenth by calling four one three, six four eight, five four one three. On is a new Berniston Recreation Activity. Good news for Berniston residents, tennis and pickleball courts, complete with equipment, are now open to the community at the Berniston Elementary School. You'll find a convenient equipment box onsite stocked with rackets and balls for both sports. Please enjoy the facilities responsibly. Use the courts and gear as instructed. Follow all posted rules and regulations and play safely at your own risk. And we received today a notice from the Mass D O T. Mass D O T will conduct a wearing surface replacement on the Berniston Road Bridge over the Greenfield and Warwick Railroad, which is the one near the steel shed, starting Thursday, August seventh, at eight P M through Friday, August eighth, at eleven A M, weather permitting. Traffic impacts will be minimal. Lane shifts and alternating one-way traffic will be used to support milling and paving operations on the bridge and its approaches. The most significant disruptions are expected to occur overnight. No detours will be required, and wide load vehicles should remain unaffected. So that's this week, Thursday into Friday morning, overnight Thursday into Friday morning. Any citizens' concerns not already on the agenda? We have no appointments tonight. New business. Uh, we had a resignation of the Conservation Agent and a letter of appreciation. I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Savannah Kitchen Conservation Agent, effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Savannah Kitchen resigned from her position to accept a full-time position as a wetlands and zoning agent. Entertain a motion to accept the letter of resignation as written.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are sending a letter off to Savannah, and it reads, "On behalf of the Berniston Select Board, we extend our sincere appreciation for your dedicated service as our town's conservation agent. Your resignation on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five marks a bittersweet moment. We're grateful for all your, all you've contributed and will truly miss your presence in this role. Throughout your tenure, you have exemplified professionalism, care, and a deep commitment to protecting Berniston's natural resources. Your guidance on conservation issues, stewardship of land and water, and thoughtful collaboration with town boards and residents have helped shape a more sustainable and vibrant community. We wish you continued success and fulfillment in, in the path ahead. You've left Berniston stronger and better prepared for the future. Best regards, Berniston Select Board." Okay, we have an appointment to the Regional Animal Control Advisory Committee. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Police Chief James Palmieri and Fire Chief Peter Shed to the Regional Animal Control Advisory Committee, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, for a one-year term. The committee is tasked to address current issues in the program and make recommendations to the Animal Control Officer and Shelter Director. Approve budget set by the.
Franklin County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. By the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and approve annual review assessment formula.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is just an annual appointment we do every year. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have the F Y twenty-six Animal Control and Dog Kennel Contracts in front of us tonight. And did everybody get a chance to review them before I read the next one? I'd entertain a motion to accept, acknowledge, and agree to the terms and objectives in the Regional Animal Control and Dog Shelter Service contracts between the Town of Berniston and the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as written, and authorize the town administrator to sign the contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
None of the numbers Jane changed in any of that. It's just what we had.
I didn't say that, so.
Just what we had projected on the budget, which they had sent us earlier.
Yeah, it was what was projected, because they had sent their assessment ahead of time.
Correct. F Y twenty-six M I A Risk Management Grants. The town administrator is asking for approval to apply for the F Y twenty-six M I I A Risk Management Grant. Risk Management Grant is committed to providing members with resources and financial support to help mitigate the impact of property-related risks and employee health and safety. M I I A members are eligible to apply for grants up to a total of ten thousand dollars per municipality. M I I A pays all vendors directly. Grant requests must align with a line of insurance coverage that M I I A provides to the town. Safety equipment for police and fire is not eligible. Grant funds are restricted to the purchase of items specified in the grant application. And Karen, you just want to speak more about what you and the highway have been talking about?
Yes, um, the one item that interested the Highway Department was they've been in need of a flammable cabinet for their flammable products. Um, it's a, it's considered, um, under the property loss prevention line of our insurance coverage. So it'd be a flammable, flammable storage cabinet is what they would like to purchase.
Sounds like a good plan, so.
He has a couple, he has something else in mind, so, and we have till May of twenty twenty-six to apply, so it's, we got a long time to.
That's good.
Do this, so, but that's one of the items that would be what we, and it, this is a, um, they, they pay the vendor directly. There's no, you know, it's, it's free money, basically. It's nothing, yeah.
Okay, with that information, I entertain a motion to authorize the town administrator to apply for the F Y twenty-six M I I A Risk Management Grant, as stated, on behalf of the Highway Department.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could that grant possibly cover the inspection and the work they have to do on the boat over the, so, the P I?
Me, I'll look into that. Let me, let me check that out. Um, they have a list of the funding here, so I'll have to look over that quickly. It's more for tangible products versus.
The inspection often requires replacement of something.
Oh, very good. Okay, yes, we will, um, I will dig into that. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna bet your pockets for maybe considered maintenance. It's worth looking into.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we also have in front of us tonight the F R T A Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. Did everybody get a chance to look through that? It's quite lengthy, that one is.
Yes.
I believe it's pretty standard bulletproof verbiage.
Yeah, it's kind of a, man, they sent us the, a, a draft document, so it's basically plugging in our Town of Berniston information. And it is required. It's, it's, it's strong, or we would, we wouldn't be able to have our own furtive van drivers if we don't sign this, basically.
And Pam has seen a copy of it.
Yep, Pam and I worked together on this, yes.
So I'd entertain a motion to adopt the F Y twenty-six Franklin Regional Transit Authority Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy for Council on Aging Van Drivers, effective August sixth, twenty twenty-five, and appoint Senior Center Director Pam Parmakian as a designated employer representative to oversee the employer's anti-drug use and alcohol misuse programs. The designated employer representative is authorized to take immediate action to remove employees from safety-sensitive duties, make decisions required in the testing process, answer employee questions about the employer's anti-drug use and alcohol misuse program for the Council on Aging Van Drivers only, just to be clear. It's just the van drivers.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Old business. Tax Work Off Program. Karen, what you got?
Okay, uh, what, uh, we presented last Select Board meeting in your absence, uh, was just an overview of what the Tax Work Off Program would entail. Um, and it, this is five people that were appointed to this committee to develop the program, uh, make sure we had all the details covered and all the legalese in place. Uh, so, we are an appointed committee for the Senior and Veteran Tax Work Off Program. As a reminder, the program is anticipated to begin in January of twenty twenty-six. How it works, this program is designed to support eligible residents in reducing their real estate tax burden. Qualified seniors over the age of sixty years old as of January first, twenty twenty-six, or veterans can earn up to seven hundred and fifty dollars in tax credits by working for the town. Eligibility includes combined household income to be at or below sixty percent of the adjusted median income as calculated federally by HUT. Examples, one person per household at or below fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Two persons, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. You have to be a homeowner in Berniston and on the deed. You have to have your taxes current. You have to have lived in Massachusetts for ten years and in Berniston for five years. Applications are available in a variety of places throughout the town. Completed applications are turned into the Senior Center. A list of the positions will be part of the application. So, uh, what you would be applying to do the work, uh, would be those positions. The committee will match up applicants to the jobs and send to each department head their recommendations, and the department head would then peruse that and see if there's a match and, uh, do the interviews. Department heads will interview and make a recommendation to the Berniston Select Board for these candidates. There will be four slots available, each for seven hundred and fifty dollars, totaling three thousand dollars, with the calculation based on the current state minimum wage of fifteen dollars. We would like the Berniston Select Board to allow the committee to also review the applicants prior to sending them onto the department heads, and we would like to start marketing in the beginning of September, so, this month coming up. We would like approval from the Berniston Select Board to move forward. So I entertain a motion to accept the program as presented and authorize the committee to proceed.
So moved.
And I'll second that. And just for discussion, I think it's a great program. You guys have put a lot of time in it. And I know we just talked about starting small to see how it all plays out, how everybody that's affected, like Sue's gonna be affected a little bit, the assessors will be affected a little bit, just to make sure we have it all figured out before we do it.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye. I am abstaining because I'm a member of the committee.
Okay, next up, we will bring it up so we can have a little discussion of the Hampshire Group, Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust update. Sue, do you just want to come up and just mention what you said to us briefly to begin with, that we're, we're starting to look at other options? The FERCog is involved now with the, I'm gonna say the wrong number again, seventies, is it seventy-six? Communities in the Hampshire group?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three?
Seventy-three. There's, so, um, various towns are reaching out to M I I A and G I C Health New England, including Berniston. We've reached out, um, to just, uh, make sure that we're doing some due diligence and, and knowing what options are available, um, because Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, um, hopefully going forward is gonna be on target, um, but we just want to make sure we have our, uh, i's dotted and t's crossed. Um, the FERCog is also doing, um, some outreach in terms of gathering questions, and so instead of seventy-three different towns reaching out to these, uh, health insurance groups, they can reach out as one entity for everybody.
And along those lines with the FERCog, if I can jump in, if we all have any questions that we want Karen to forward to the C O G, if we can do it collectively to one, they've given us a pretty short window. We just got the email today, and they think they want them by, is it tomorrow? So that they, this is, this is a hot topic, as if people don't understand, we just had a mid-year twenty percent increase in insurance rates for active employees. We're not sure how it's gonna affect retirees yet. Is that a true statement?
Uh, we have one re- retiree who is, uh, who will be affected.
Okay.
Um, but the, the Med X plans work on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year, and their rates will likely increase by at least twenty percent as well, beginning, beginning in January. That's all we know right now.
Go ahead.
Uh, so Susan, Jane, and myself participated in a two-hour?
At least two hour, two and a half hour.
Zoom conference with all the other seventy-three entities, uh, present, or almost all of them present, uh, where they laid out the details what caused this, and that would be what I would be interested in, that's, uh, there, there's two direct causes that resulted in the, uh, elimination of a reserve for the insurance coverages. They had seventy-three million, something, some huge number of dollars at the beginning of the year.
Seventeen, more like it, sixteen to seventeen.
Okay, million dollars, uh, on January first of twenty twenty-five. That has all gone away, and in fact, they're negative at this point. Hopefully, uh, when they make payments and, and get cash, uh, inflow, it will come back, but it's predicated on a twenty percent increase effective October first of twenty twenty-five. The issue here is that the town has already set its budget for the year, and we don't have that kind of money, you know, in any available fund. Jane's coming up to explain this better for us, but what, what really has triggered this is, is two things. One is Ozempic or the G L P ones.
Yeah, they call them the G L P one.
Which are drugs that were intended to reduce or control, uh, diabetic issues, but their side effect is that they cause weight loss, and everybody jumped on the bandwagon and said, "I need weight loss," and the doctors have written out the prescriptions, and the insurance companies have been paying on these incredibly expensive, uh, prescriptions. Um, the net effect there is to draw down the reserve. The other issue for the reserve was there's an unusually high number of special cases. These are people that are fighting cancer or other catastrophic illnesses that is way above the norm that they have predicted in the past, and that also has drawn down the reserve. So those two effects coupled together have put in jeopardy the insurance, the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. And they can't operate in the negative, so they've gotta make up the dollars, and that's what the twenty percent increase is. Did I take too long to explain that?
No, I, I think that was, you did a good job.
Seventeen days, so we know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if anybody up here has questions they would like to ask, have the FERCog ask on our behalf, it's probably the same question some other town has as well.
Correct.
If you can shoot Karen an email or tell her tonight before you leave, if you know what your questions are yet, it's a very short window.
The question I would have for Jane, in particularly the Finance Committee, um, assuming we are faced with this twenty percent, and that's a fair assumption, because we voted to, uh, support it. Um, do we need to have a special town meeting before October first, or can we?
No, we don't need one before October first.
Okay.
I have a spreadsheet.
I knew you did.
I short one copy. So, you can share with Karen, or, or we'll make another copy.
Actually, I can look over there.
That's all right.
On the front side, bottom right-hand corner, is, these are my numbers. If I did something wrong, I'm sorry, but I based it on the spreadsheet, the last spreadsheet that Susan and I had, which, um, had a cushion of two family plans for the medical and one family plan for dental. And we do that every year, and we choose the most expensive plan to plug in, that, which is done in case we got a new employee who need, wants insurance, we have the money in the bank to do it. So down in the bottom right-hand corner, it shows the totals for the town, and then I showed the total for the whole, for the town and the employees, because I wanted to figure out, um, what I guessed the, um, actual premium would be that, that you would be seeing the check for. So, we budgeted two hundred and one thousand, seven hun- eight hundred dollars, which means that if, if all these plan, if all these plans stay in place, we would be eighty-eight thousand dollars in the red. But if I take those two cushions out, the two family plans and the one dental plan, then the deficit, um, drops down to thirty-six thousand, five hundred. Based on what I calculated to be, um, a premium, um, that should get us to the fourth quarter, which is plenty of time to make a decision of, do we have to have a special meeting, or do we have an account it can, can come out of, or several accounts? So, in that respect, we're, we're okay for now. Um, but sometime in the spring, we're gonna have to make a further decision about that.
To cover the thirty-six thousand.
To cover the deficit.
Assuming we don't hire any.
Right.
Employees that require health insurance, or nobody switches.
Well, nobody can switch.
Well, if they have a family change and they're on their spouses, it potentially could come on to ours.
Or somebody gets married and, you know, that's a qualifying event, so.
A child.
Well, we're not gonna allow any of that. None of that's allowed this year.
Is that right?
We're putting out an order.
That's the hope.
Nobody can get sick, have any accidents.
You can't get sick.
Have children.
You can't adopt.
Have a question for, for Susan. This, and, and, don't worry about the numbers, but the town pays how much? What percentage?
The town pays seventy-five percent.
So the employee pays twenty-five percent.
Correct.
And the employee suffers that same twenty percent increase.
They're suffering the same as, as the town, and on the backside, I have something I would like to discuss there.
But, but understand that that means that our employees who are not overcompensated, but they're, they're, they're compensated to the level at which the town can afford them, all of a sudden are gonna take a hit, just like the town is gonna take a hit. It's gonna be tough on all employees.
And as I have personally taken a hit in the past.
Yep.
So I know exactly how that feels.
It's.
To mid-year.
They don't have it in their budgets either.
And that little letter saying, "Sorry to let you know, but the rates went up, and this is what's coming out of your check next payday."
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not fun.
So can you take us through this?
So I have two proposals here, and I don't know if you are interested in either one of them. But I, I feel for our employees. I feel for us, because I don't know what we're gonna do, but, um, the employees are gonna get hit first. So one of my recommendations is that when their, um, when their deduction comes in September, that in, instead of having to pay the full difference, which, let's take somebody, let's take the, um, oh, there's one on here that's only, there's only one person in, so let's use that, because the numbers will stay the same all the way across. They won't be multiplied by anything. So, that monthly increase for that one person is gonna be ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents, if my numbers are right. But, but that's not far off. And then I calculated what I thought the payroll deduction would be based on twenty-six payrolls. So I'm figuring the payroll deduction would be forty-five oh nine. That's just the increase.
Yeah, uh, we take health and dental insurance withholdings on twenty-four pays. So there's two months of the year in which you get three pays, and we just know, we just don't do it, so it's.
Okay, so they, so I'll fix that to twenty-four, but, um. I just thought you might be interested in what it, what the effect was on a paycheck. That's why I put that column in. So then I, my first proposal is that for September, the town pay half of what their increase is. So that it spreads out their, um, shock. So, so the first month it would go up by $20, this one, this, or I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong line. The first month that would go up, you know, $48. And the second month would go up another 48, so they would be at the $97 increase by, by November, by October. The other proposal, and that would cost the town a total of $507, I think. Based on, based on who's in the plan now, nothing to do with the cushions. And then my other proposal is to, um, in September, pay two-thirds of their increase. And in October, pay one-third of their increase. And then in November, they'd be paying their full increase themselves. They would cost the town $1,015. So it would increase our deficits to 89,189,600.
Right, you and I talked about this today, it was, I mean, we wanna try to do something, I believe, to help the employees a little bit. I mean, it's gonna be tough enough for the town to suck up the 20%. It's gonna be even worse for the individual employees to suck it up. To have some sign of good faith. I wouldn't support taking and paying the whole increase because at some point, they're gonna have to assume it. If our formulas are gonna stay the same at the 75.25. This is a show of good faith, no matter where we put these numbers. And we can move these numbers around for more months. It's just, you can see what it does to add to the deficit, if you will. Like if we say, let's carry it to the first of the year with a similar formula what Jane has. To help reduce some of the burden on the town employees. We also had a conversation of, and I'm making a number up. Do you add a dollar an hour to people's pay? And they take this right from the first month. Over the course of the year, you know, a dollar an hour for a full-time employee is 2600, is that the right number? How many hours a year do we work?
Uh, 2,080.
Thank you. So it's a couple grand a year to a full-time worker, to help them offset some of those costs. What does that do to our budget if we did that?
Throws it off even more.
Right, I mean, there's more. Let's face it, this is a heartache for the towns and the school districts that are all trying to suck it up now. But for the individual person, as you said to start with, Kevin, that aren't making big money in, in a municipal anyway. This is a killer for the individual that's trying to pay rent or mortgage or raise kids. When they just got, was it 18% we got, June, July 1st?
Yeah, in, in gross, you know, for the difference between fiscal '25 and fiscal '26. It's a, been a 41 and a half percent increase in the total premium cost.
Where can you ever see that, right?
Yeah.
How do you suck that?
We gave them 3% raise?
Right.
41% to 3%. They're, they're.
I mean, and the deficit, I know you had some ideas of where we potentially could get some money. You and I are gonna look at some of them.
Well, we have some, um, we have some accounts on the books that have been there for years and never been touched. So there are possibility, but unfortunately, they can't be, they can't be accessed directly for this. Nor can they, the balance that's in there be transferred to anything that makes it accessible for this.
They would have to fall to free cash.
They would get to fall into free cash. And that free cash would be next year's free cash.
So that solves next year's problem unless.
Cause we're gonna know, you know, Elizabeth may already know what she thinks our free cash is gonna be. She's close to knowing that.
Soon.
Soon. And so, you know, the possibility, if, if we really had just a deficit of 36,000, I would say we raise the reserve fund to try to cover other things that we're not gonna get in this town.
Like loss of grants, potentially.
And, um, the 36,000 could probably come out of that. It might mean that we can't support something else that comes along. But again, remember, we don't have to make this decision now.
Next spring.
Down the road.
The employees have to make that decision.
September.
Right, and they have.
September 1.
Yeah, I'm paying, and whether to stay in the interest.
Yeah, we really have two things we need to discuss is the deficit. And how can we help the employees lessen the blow for at least a few months?
Can, I wanna add something to what, because you've mentioned, um, other scenarios, spreading it out further. By doing a two-thirds share in September and a one-third share in October, we're really doing one whole month, one whole month for them.
Right, right, that's true.
So if that's what we decided was to pay one whole month, however we spread it out, it wouldn't change the $1,000.
True.
Or if we decide to choose some other number that.
Unless we feel it needs.
To continue.
If we can do it, if we can continue, we just have to remember that. July 1st of next year, no matter what happens, if this group is still solvent and still there, you know there's gonna be a significant increase. If we go to a different provider because we decide that's the best interest of the town and the employees wanna dump this one and go to something different. A betting man that I am is gonna say those rates are gonna be significantly higher than they're paying right now. At some point, we gotta get back to that 75.25.
Yeah.
It's whether they, we spread it out over a few months to help lessen the blow. Even if, as you just said, if we paid it till next July 1st, they're gonna take the whole 20% plus whatever the new increase is right now.
That just, that just postpones their.
Their pain.
Pain and makes it worse.
Makes it worse for the town now, too. I mean, there's no good answer in this, that's the problem with this. And we're lucky, we're only talking how many employees, 12 or 11?
Yeah.
I mean, look at some of these school districts that are talking.
Yeah.
100 or better. How do they suck it up?
Yeah, well, I haven't heard anybody that's gonna do anything for their employees.
No, especially the schools because they're contractual stuff.
Yeah.
But for us, we have the ability, well, not, maybe not the dollars, but we have the ability to say, hey, we wanna do this.
If there's, if there's a silver lining here, and they have changed the, what they call the formulary, which is the list of all the drugs that they'll cover. And they have eliminated these DLP-1 drugs.
Unless it's for diabetic.
Right, different issue, right.
Yeah, but I, I don't want the diabetic people to think.
To have a heart attack, yeah.
This is true.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I mean, when do you typically take that money? The first paycheck in September or you take it out of the two pays?
The increase, they'll see the increase in their first September paycheck.
So we would have to decide fairly quick if this first month, we're gonna, wanna try to do something for them.
I think there's a variety of ways it can be, you know, instituted into a, into their pay. But, I mean, that's open for discussion, right?
Yeah, everything's on the table.
If you can't decide by, you know, the first paycheck in September, you know, it could, there's other options.
We have one more meeting between now and September 1st.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
When is the first payroll in September?
28, you went early, right? I, I'm actually going to be away, um, so I'm gonna request payroll be submitted to me early. But, um, looking at the calendar, uh, it will be September 4th is the actual payday.
And that new increase would be in that.
The new increase would be in that.
They should pay the month ahead.
Yeah.
So you need drop dead date to know from us, the Select Board, what date?
Um, I would like 28, the 28th, drop dead, I mean, preferably, you know, the 27th.
So that's the next meeting.
Three weeks, you've got three weeks.
20th is the next meeting.
So that gives you enough time, eight days? Okay.
When are you going?
That's a lot of calculations.
Um, the 29th.
Yeah.
So I'll have to have everything updated for the 28th.
Now, just on a side, we have a scheduled meeting next week, Wednesday.
Personnel committee, yeah.
If we wanna discuss this more, that we can add to the agenda. We still have time to do that. I mean, this is a big.
We have Donna coming. Donna will be here on Wednesday.
We can still do hers and then talk about it after, or start earlier, whatever we wanna do, but.
Yeah.
Are you planning to talk to your Finance Committee, do you think, or?
Well, I haven't tried to get them, I mean, they know that it's happened. But I haven't shared this with my, I haven't.
This is excellent, by the way, Jane. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Bad news, but it is.
Well, it's not as bad as it could have been.
Okay.
Really.
Okay.
You know, the, the wor, the bottom line, the worst scenario is that we have to use the whole reserve fund to cover the deficit. That's the worst news you can get out of that sheet.
That impacts a whole lot of others, yes.
Every place else.
Yeah.
And, and I said this to somebody, maybe it was Karen, I said, if we have to do that, it means nobody, any place in this town can overspend any budget by one cent.
And you and I had a discussion today as well, um, because you brought up a special town meeting.
Yeah.
We've missed that boat.
We have?
Yes.
For changing the tax rate, according to.
According to the information I have now, if you have your special town meeting before July 1st and vote more money, then it stays in that fiscal year.
Okay.
But once you pass July 1st, it goes. So any money we vote now won't affect this year's tax rate.
27.
Next year's. We're beginning to spend the money that we haven't even started talking about budgets for.
Right.
I don't know the answer to my next question. If we get free cash certified, let's say in October, November?
We can start spending it in October, November.
Do we have to go through a town meeting to do that?
Town meeting.
We could have a special town meeting to allocate some of the free cash we just had certified to help us.
And every time either we, that we certify from free cash, we don't have to use for the things that we normally use.
Right, and just remember, it's just a cumulative effect. It just buys us a little time sooner or later by using the free cash. We're gonna pay the piper sooner or later.
Yep.
It's just pushing it down the road a little bit to buy us some time to creatively come up with the money.
I do, I do like this, this idea of doing something for them. I'll carry it a little further. Uh, I know it's August and it's tough to think about, but if we're looking at September, October, right around the corners of the holiday, too, and I would love to help our employees at least till January. That'd be my.
And that's a decision we all have to help make, yeah, for sure.
So you wanna go up four months, September, October, November, December?
Yeah, you should get two, see what that looks like.
Pretty major holidays in there.
That's a tough pill to swallow. Don't even think of the holidays till you said.
Well, if you look at the town, you look at the count, town, column that says towns.
Yeah.
Pays half, just divide by two, and that's what it would mean for four months. So, so for that, one EE that we were looking at, that would be $24.42. For the four individuals on each, I mean, $10.15 each month. For the family HMO, it would mean $30.09. For the PPOs, it would mean $33.55 or 60 cents, whatever, 65 cents.
So this one here, just to, maybe I'm saying in a different way, the same thing. This $1,015 is basically a month's worth of the 20% increase to the employees.
Two months?
Two months?
Yeah.
One month?
One month.
Right.
If, if we paid 100%.
Okay. $1,015 each month.
To pay the total increase to the employee.
So, half of that is the 507.67 each month. So if we said September, October, November, December, that's four months, that's roughly $2,000 in back to the town.
Right, on top of what we, right.
To pay, to support them at 50%.
I'd really see it somehow decreasing.
Yeah, so that they're slowly get used to it?
They get eased into the shock, right.
Well, we could still start, well, if we could do that, we could carry it past the first of the year. To shoot for that $2,000 total.
Cause to Brian, her viewpoint, Christmas bills don't come in on December 31st or December 25th. They come in on, in January to pay the credit card.
I mean, if you started.
Eighty, twenty, forty, sixty, forty, twenty, zero.
There you go.
Something like that, or 100, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, sliding down.
Makes it harder for you, probably.
Yeah. She's gonna have to go on vacation again.
What's the easiest way? There is no easy way for you.
Lump sum. Right. Lump sum, you know, like maybe, yeah, just.
Suck it up and pay the $2,000 or some, whatever it is.
Or, you know, twice or something, but I mean, but those are the details that can be determined. It's really the, the dollar amount I think that the town can afford.
Right.
And, um.
Well, we can't afford anything, so that's not.
But I think we all are trying to be compassionate in this to help them out as much as we think we can.
Yeah, they didn't cause this problem.
Cause it stinks.
Yeah.
All right, so recommendation to discuss this further at next week's special Select Board meeting. And then make a decision that we can get to her on the 20th. Does that work?
Sure, yeah.
And your preference again is a lump sum or two, two halves?
Yeah.
That way, the impact on you doing the payrolls is less.
She did, she doesn't care as long as she knows what it has to be.
I tell you, she's gonna need another vacation.
And I'm gonna take one.
Go for it.
And then people will send questions still for this correspondence for tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Just a reminder.
Just.
So, uh, before we leave this subject, um, do you want me to invite the whole Finance Committee to next Wednesday?
Well, we have a meeting with Town Council at 6 o'clock already scheduled. That's probably gonna last at least an hour, an hour and a half, right?
Yes.
We have a 5 o'clock Planning Board, is that what time the Planning Board is gonna have to be?
Yeah.
That shouldn't take long.
That shouldn't last long.
That should be, I think, 5:30, yeah.
5:30, half hour at the most.
Can you be here at 5:30 next Wednesday, you think, or is that too soon?
No, I can, I could probably do 5:30.
Is it a separate meeting then, 5:30 to 6:00, find out joint meeting with the Finance Committee, okay.
Just to discuss this topic.
Okay.
No, I'll, I'll file the Finance Committee separately.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you said an hour and a half.
Well, you might go in to talk with your group about some other stuff.
Yeah, or, or I was just thinking, we don't have to be here for your whole meeting. So I could list the Finance Committee for 7 o'clock.
Oh, I got you, to get out?
To, to meet with you at 7 o'clock.
Or we can.
Cause you, if you're gonna move it up to 5:30, you said an hour.
If we think a half hour is enough to meet with you, is what we're saying.
We're saying 5:30 for you guys.
For you.
Oh, yeah, so we, yeah, no, I.
We'd only have till 6. But it's, we're gonna tell you the dollar figure we think, however we hash it out, however it gets paid out.
So you don't want me to put any more scenarios in here?
Yeah, you can make them up and we can talk about those then, but we'll just only have a half an hour.
And we can set up a separate time for, so you can make more time, I just, it's up to you.
Let's stick with that meeting.
Okay.
Well, our decision doesn't have to happen until the 20th.
Right.
Right, really the 28th, but we meet on the 20th.
We can at least go over your new scenarios.
Next week.
And then we'd have a Select Board meeting a week later again, here, this one, that we could discuss it again. And still a, a week or better ahead of what Sue action needs.
All right, so do you want me to see if this, if the Finance people can meet at 5:30 or at 7?
5:30.
5:30.
Yeah.
And if you make new scenarios, that would be awesome.
Eight, 180, 40, 60, but I know that's a burden on the.
Oh, I'm not gonna start with 100.
Okay, your choice, you, you're making them up, so.
I know, but.
We're, we're at your.
Cause they've had some notice. So if we pay some portion of it and. So if we pay some portion of it in August.
Have, have they been notified?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
They've been notified. I, I sent something out late Sunday night.
Okay. Have we heard back from anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
I have not personally, but.
What's that?
Karen's been hearing, I've been hearing.
Okay, good.
And Sue is gonna reach out to those two people that have the PPO plan, which is the most expensive one.
Correct.
Which the insurance group will allow people to drop back to the.
The HMO.
The HMO, if they so choose. She's gonna make sure those two individuals understand that.
And I've heard back from one party, and they are reviewing their options. I just did that, you know, uh, an hour ago.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I'm hoping the other person will have a.
So at least those two won't fall through. They're the only two that have the ability to make any changes to their insurance during this.
There's always, um, I, I believe the initial letter that I sent out said that an employee can cancel their insurance at any time. So, you know, if, if they have other options or they feel like they just can't afford it, then they can cancel.
Go to the state provided?
Or spouses, or their spouse.
I, I don't know what's available through Mass Health or, or, you know, the state options. That's not, not my expertise.
Okay, five thirty? Next Wednesday, joint committee, joint meeting.
Even if it's just you and then we, everybody pay out on a column.
They should, you know.
Be invited.
Well, I'm trying to ki, give them enough information besides what they're hearing in the news to keep them up, but we haven't had a meeting. And how can you?
You could make them sit through that two-hour Zoom, Zoom thing and they'd be up to speed. That was me.
And you're gonna post your own meeting then, Jane, did you say?
Yeah, since it's not, not gonna be, the whole thing is not gonna be joined, so I think I should.
So I'll change our start time to five thirty, but that is changing the time.
Right.
Okay, and adding this agenda item upfront.
Perfect.
And again, if you have questions that you know you wanted to ask about.
Right, I will.
Yeah.
The feed to the fur cog, if you can get those to Karen.
Yes, cause I'll be responding to.
Unless that question you're asking.
Um, I, I looked at the list that they've already put together.
Yes.
Some of my questions were already there, so, yeah.
So you have nothing to add then, probably?
Um, I, I'll look at it again tonight, no problem, send you something.
Yeah, even negative response, just, just like, I have nothing to add, just so I know you look at it and you're done, and then I can, that's all I need. You don't have to have a question, but if you just, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good.
Thank you, Susan.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thanks for running those two. I know we talked about it, you lifted it up pretty quick. You and I only talked at like one thirty, wasn't it?
I know.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. Take it to the H box.
Okay, next up on our agenda under old business, I wanna get to the right sheet. Uh, Ken Boarder, we had the last meeting, provide an update to the town.
You did that, so, oh, go ahead, my apologies. I thought you were on the tax work off. My apologies.
You already did this, right, Ken? You brought to the board meeting once or not?
I, I, but we need to set up a committee, so we need to authorize that committee, and I couldn't because I'm on one of the committees.
Makes sense. So this next topic is in regards to the Powers Institute Board of Trustees, the Historical Commission, and Berniston Historical Society Subcommittee Appointments. To form a joint committee. So to entertain a motion for the first one to approve the forming of a subcommittee that represents equal memberships of the Powers Institute Board of Trustees. The Historical Commission and the Berniston Historical Society to help explore the possibility of merging the three separate entities into one committee.
I would, it's not equal representation. There's only a couple of people on some of these committees, and then there's four, five, or six on others.
Well, I wanna point out that the Historical Society is not a town.
We know that.
Entity.
Yep.
They, they still wanna explore it. We were aware of that.
We're gonna get rid of the three and create one new committee that will.
You can't get rid of Powers Institute trustees.
I already told them that, but.
Yep, it's, it's right in Cushman's will. That is how that is supposed to be run, and that is how Cushman Library has their trustees.
All fine and good, we're gonna find a way, that's what the subcommittee's about. Good luck with, to us. As a subcommittee, retain counsel.
The ones will stay in place.
What we call it at the end, so that we satisfy the will. The trust will exist some in some form, and we'll figure out either that or we'll blow up the trust and say, too bad.
I mean, I don't know how to get out of something that's.
And that's, that's for minds.
When the world changes.
A lawyer figured it out.
You know?
But let him, let him figure it out.
Greater minds than ours.
So let my, what I was saying, looking for a motion, die in the vine, that's not, nobody moved it, so it's not anything. And I'm gonna move, I'll go right to this sheet.
That's good, yeah, please.
I'll entertain a motion. I'm gonna get the right word here now.
To appoint.
To approve the forming of a subcommittee of representatives of the Powers Institute Board of Trustees, representatives of the Historical Commission. And representatives of the Berniston Historical Society to explore the possibility of merging the three separate entities into one committee. With the committee consisting of Marcia Pratt, Christina Streeter, Ingrid Skiff, Donna Eddy. Christine Panio, Panio, how do you say that?
Panio, yep.
Panio, thank you. Kelt Grant, Beth Deck, Chris Schrammel, Ken Borweek, Polly Reed, and Pat Rower. So moved.
I can't second it.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion from anybody on it?
Who's who?
Can I say something else? So if you're looking at this standing in the future, keep in mind that the Powers Institute trustees are an elected body.
Yep. We got all kinds of issues to overcome.
Faction of legislature to.
It might take an act of God, who knows? We're, we're gonna work on it to get to the desired end result.
And I don't have a problem with not having one less board to deal with for elections.
Right, this is good.
To try to fill twelve seats.
All in, yeah.
Any other discussion on that?
All I know is when it comes to the Supreme Court, I have no idea what he was doing. I'm kidding.
I, I just, like, they try, this was tried before. Because tied into this trust is not being able to build an efficient part. So, um, the effort to, um. Get around the board, get rid of the trust, um, didn't work.
Fails, fails in every turn.
It did, uh, it did, um, take up part of our attorney fees budget.
Yeah.
Anyway.
And we're not going over anybody's budget this year.
Right, so we can only fend up.
Any more than what you got.
You don't have a budget to work with for that, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
I abstain.
Can, go ahead, sorry.
Let me see. All right, I think I know who some of them are, but in terms of what board they currently.
Oh.
So I have any idea?
He did, I didn't, I didn't get that information.
I don't, Christine Champ Schrammel is not on any of the boards.
So she must be the historical society.
Well, she might be, and I don't know who those members are at all because they're not somebody that I track.
Okay.
So, they're gonna have to.
These are just, we could call them interested citizens.
They're gonna have to become trackable, I guess, with the.
I can get you that info, um, if you're interested.
Some of them I know, but.
Yeah, I can get you that information. Yeah, I can look it.
Yeah, I knew Pat was on there.
Karen and I will discuss the.
The society, right.
Okay, next up on our other business unknown time posting, we have a request from the planning board. The planning board has developed a new zoning bylaw language for accessory dwelling units, known as ADUs. To comply with the revisions made under the Affordable Homes Act signed by Governor Healy. The planning board would like to, like town council to review their working copy of Berniston zoning bylaws.
Only as it relates to the ADUs. Not the whole envelope of.
No, just the language to the ADUs.
Just the language, the state language.
If you're gonna suck it right out of the state and plug it into our bylaw.
State, Trump's, whatever we have, so.
You have the, it's part of your packet.
Yep.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to authorize the planning board to retain the services of town council with purpose reviewing their proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling units bylaw.
So moved.
Say.
Sorry. Any other discussion?
Draw a blank there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Why change it just to ADUs, not their whole bylaw?
But it's, right, it, it's within the zoning bylaws. It's a portion of language within the bylaws, so that's what I want to say.
Review their whole bylaws.
No, no, just that.
The con just did that.
Just anything that contains the accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
Okay, town administrator report.
Just something real quick, um, this is Ken's favorite topic, it's Pioneer Valley mosquito control. All right. The weekly report, I thought it was noteworthy because, um, there were three west Nal virus reportings and passive pools confirmed in Deerfield. West Springfield and East Long Meadow, um, and again, our weather conditions are supporting.
Deerfield?
Deerfield, West Springfield, and East Long Meadow. So there were, um, yeah, three pools confirmed, and so far, positive mosquito samples, um, for triple E is two and sixty-one west Nal virus positive samples with only one affected animal, no human cases, but anyway, it's getting closer. It seems to start on the east side of the state and kinda come over, so.
And I.
I just, uh, this is all effective August first was the findings, and so this gentleman's been very busy with, um, our mosquito district guy, so. That's all I have.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up?
Nope, I'm good. I brought enough up.
Well, I'm in, I'm in mosquito district, that actually comes directly from the Board of Health, so if there's action that needs to be taken from that reporting, I think the Board of Health.
Correct, yep.
Yes.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I move, we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye, good night, everyone, thank you.
So you gotta give Brian Herview.